I was appointed by the Attorney General to be the Special Master of the 9/11 Victims Compensation Fund. And I'm going today, this evening, to try to give your Spanish speaking. There is somebody transplanted in the back on the left-hand side. There's a person up here, if you're here and you care. And as you can all see, the class is here. The press has a great deal of interest. If you have questions that you want to ask that are personal, I will stay actively leading to answer your questions. If you don't want to be asking your questions, I'll keep in front of everyone. So hopefully, this will answer many of your questions. Hopefully, all of them, although I am sure there's a great deal of uncertainty that remains for most people. Let me tell you something about myself. There are some familiar faces, and some of you have been to other town halls. And if any of this is repetitive, I'm sorry. But if you're going to be in groups, you can follow us around. You're going to have to hear again because there are lots of people who have not heard this story. I was born in the Bronx. I'm a New Yorker. I lived in New York all my life. I love New York, and I love New Yorkers. And I was fortunate to be educated in New York. I went to public school, James Monroe High School in the Bronx. I went to college in the Bronx, so I went to Hunter College in the Bronx. I taught the 4th grade in the Bronx. And for the first 26 years of my life, I lived in the Bronx. I went to law school, at Yale University Law School. And I've been a lawyer, practicing in some of the areas that we're going to be talking about here. Before this, I was appointed by Judge Paul Steen to act as a mediator for the 9/11 cases that didn't go into the first five but went to the courts. And there were 93 cases that went to the courts. And as a mediator, my job for the court and for the families was to try to negotiate settlements so that people who get their resolutions before that could go to court with all of the uncertainties of court cases. And I'm proud to say that we settled 91 of the 93 cases, and now actually two more have settled, and there's only one case remaining. But that experience was a very valuable one. I got to talk to many 9/11 families who had lost people both in the planes and in the World Trade Center and in the Pentagon. And it was a very moving, emotional experience to hear these stories. And I got to understand a little well the emotional impact of what 9/11 was for the families. It was an emotional impact for all of us who live in New York, but not for like those families who suffered injuries, suffered deaths. And that emotional impact is still as vital and important today as it was five years ago in 10 years. So I bring to this process at least an understanding of what this means to so many people. But this is a very hard job that I have. You're going to understand why when you see what Congress has done. Because there is a statute, and I have to abide by the statute. And as John Field has said, and I think many of you know John Field, he and many, many union members and union leaders were very influential and spent, and many of you spent weekends and all kinds of times in Washington, trying to get the Congress to pass a new Victims Compensation Fund. The First Victims Compensation Fund was closed down after two years. And there was no way to either get treatment or to get compensation for these injuries. And John and others spent enormous amounts of time trying to get a bill passed by Congress. And as I've heard John say, this was a compromise bill. It wasn't a 10, it was a 6. Because nobody got everything that they wanted from this bill. But as a special minister, I'm governed by the terms of that statute. I can't go beyond what Congress has provided. So you have to bear with me when I have limitations that the Congress has provided under the bill. Now, we have put on our website, and you can find the regulations, the draft regulations, that we have put out for comments. And at the end of this presentation, I'm going to show you where you can comment if you have comments on these regulations. These are the regulations that come out of the statute that are going to govern how this fund operates. So we are going to be putting together in the next several months the applications, the format, all of the pieces of this puzzle to hopefully be able to start the opening of the fund on October 1st or soon thereafter so that people can start filing applications. But you don't have to follow all at once. I mean, you can wait. There isn't a rush to be the first through the door. It's not going to make a difference. And I'll explain to you why that is so. So I'm going to spend several minutes going over what this statute does and what it doesn't. Then take your questions and try to answer your questions to the best of my ability based on what we know today and what we think is going to happen. So as you all know, the twelve program, which was passed by Congress and signed by the President on January 2nd, wanted to take care of the injuries that were beginning to occur right at the time of the First Victims Compensation Fund while the towers came down. This was meant to create both treatment under Title I and also compensation under Title II. There are two parts of this bill. And it's very important that you all know about Title I because that provides treatment through Centers of Excellence, Mount Sinai, Bellevue, and other institutions in which if you have certain injuries that we'll talk about that have been deemed to be related to exposure at the World Trade Center, you will be treated free at least for the next five years if that's all the funding there is at the moment for any of the injuries used as pain that are covered by this. So that's a separate piece of this. It's called the Medical Monitoring and Treatment Part. The part, I have nothing to do with that part. That part is run by Dr. John Howard of National Institute of Safety and Observational Health. So we're going to talk to you about what happens in that part. But I'm running, and I'm in this regard, Title II. This is the compensation part of this twelve program. Let's talk about the health program first because there are differences between the health program and the compensation program. And those are important differences for these programs. First of all, the treatment program provides for treatment of certain medical injuries that we'll talk about and also psychologically. Post-traumatic stress disorder, depression. These medical injuries are covered for treatment. Now, this is important because if you have post-traumatic stress disorder, you can get treatment in one of these Centers of Excellence. Cancer is not included among the illnesses that are covered by the Medical Monitoring Program. Now, you all see in the papers, it's addressed, it's been on TV, that last week, Dr. Howard and Miles from the government was supposed to be looking at the medical and scientific literature to determine if there's a causal link or picture that it gives the medical or scientific literature that can be looked at so that they could add any of these answers to the illnesses that are World Trade Center-related according to the medical and scientific evidence. And they came up with a review that said at this point in time, there is insufficient evidence to show the causal link. Now, a lot of people think that's a terrible result. It's not a result that is going to be installed. They're going to go up in six months, in a year. They're going to look at it again. They're going to consider all the new studies that will be coming. And they will look at those studies. If there is causal link, they can add that to what can be treated. And we have said in our regulations that if there is any injuries, whether it's cancer or other injuries, because there are people who think other injuries should be added that are not there as well. If those injuries are active, they will be added to the compensation piece as well as soon as they're active. We still have the ability to look at the medical and scientific evidence ourselves and come to a conclusion that may be different. But clearly, if they find it, we will add it to the injuries that would be covered by the compensation part of this twelve program. When something is active, if you have applied before that to the fund for other injuries that are covered, you may be able to supplement your forms, your application, and indeed, treatment moderating part. There's a scientific advisory plan that is going to be created that will be made up of scientists, doctors, those in the community. And I'm sure that there will be some of them from labor unions and other groups that have been active in this CRLV. They're going to be looking at the science and hitting conditions based on the science as it evolves. Now, this is the satisfactory answer to many of you who have cancer now and want to know why you might get a compensation. But that is the state of where we are at on the issue of cancer. Now, what does Title II of this twelve program act to? It is a continuation in some ways of the first five. And remember, the First Victims Compensation Fund, it paid about 2,300 death cases. It also covered a little over 2,000 personal injury cases, many traumatic injuries that occurred on the pile. And what we have known is trying to talk about some of the similarities and some of the differences of the two parts. And what it is supposed to be doing is provide compensation, or to tell you what that compensation takes for physical injuries or death. Physical injuries are there. And you're going to see that this is a really difficult assignment because we're going to be dealing with a limited fund. And I'll explain how that is going to work. But that's what Congress gave us to work. So what are the similarities? Well, let's talk about the differences first. Eligibility. Under the first five, to be eligible, you have to be within a very small area. You have to act in present, at the World Trade Center itself or anywhere where the debris had just come down. It's a very small area. We're going to show you what that area was. We've extended that area. The statute has extended it. The regulations have extended it. And it is a much larger area now. And we're going to show you what is included in that. And if you were present within that area for a certain period of time, you may be eligible for compensation. It will tell you what else has to be given to you. It doesn't matter whether you're a uniform firefighter or policeman, whether you're a plate porter, whether you live in the residences around downtown, whether you work downtown, all of these people are eligible. This is a much larger number of people who are ever potentially eligible under the First Victims Compensation Fund. So there's likely to be thousands of people applying under this act. If you have to be there immediately after that at the World Trade Center in Cincinnati, but the statute created a much larger period of time. If you were there between September 1, 2001, and May 30, 2002, you are eligible. Now, immediate aftermath is something that is defined in the statute. So again, we're going to agree with the statute with people who were present during that period of time. So there are other differences that are very important to a whole. The first fund was an unlimited fund. Turns out that $7.5 billion was paid under the first five. But it was unlimited. There was no restriction that Congress put. This fund is restricted. There's only $2.775 billion that you say only. It sounds like a lot of money to me. But we have to see how many people apply and what their injuries are, what their economic losses. We don't have any more money. Besides that, Congress paid past this because of budgetary reasons. Oh, we provide for $875 million to be available in the first five years. So even if you give it more, you're eligible, and you get it more, within the first five years, unless many fewer people apply than you think, your award will not be a whole award. It will be some proportion of it because we will only have $875 million to spend in the first five years. The rest of the money comes in in '60. So under this fund, there will be two payments. Paying in the first five years, and then another payment in '60. That payment is also dependent on how many people apply, what is the entire universe of money that can be spent. And it's possible that that would be tolerated down if there isn't enough money as well. So this is what we have to work. Another problem with this fund is that Congress said that all your administrative costs come out of this fund. There is no separate fund to administer this. So we have to do this very efficiently and effectively because every dollar we have to pay to administer this comes out of your fund. That's why I'm going to be taking a salary from this fund because I'm not going to take money from the victims even though my piece would be very small. I'm going to set an example for others so that we can get people to volunteer their time and effort so that there's more money left for the victims. So things that we'd like to do, we're not going to be able to do because we don't have the money to do it. But I'd like to meet with every family and every lawyer for every family. I would. I'd like to do that. But it's impossible if we have thousands of people applying. And every time we meet with people, it's going to cost dollars from the fund because at some point, there's a cost for it. So we've been trying to do this in a way that's trying to be user-friendly. We're going to try to do it as much as possible by having you there with the forms, having the forms in plain English, having, making it easier for us to try to get your medical records like you having to go get your medical records that you have been creating in some place that we can get electronically. We're going to try to do that. And you try to get information that is important to this process electronically without you having to give it to us. Whatever we can do to make it easy to administer this and to make it easier to use, to clean the applications, that's what we're working on. That's what we're trying to get done in the next month and a half so we can do it right. Now, the first fund only covered physical injury or death. The statute is exactly the same. The statute talks about physical injury or death. The first fund did not pay for mental injuries. We don't believe we can do that under this one. A lot of people are disappointed because post-traumatic stress disorder is not covered for compensation. It is covered for treatment. You can go to the Centers of Excellence for treatments if you have post-traumatic stress disorder. But Congress did not put it into the statute, and we don't have the ability to pay for that under the statute. The physical injury or death has to be as a result of the air clashes or the debris injuries. That is a piece that is keeping us. And at this point, the engage was a put cancers into this fund because it has to be as a result of. And right now, the last record last week says they're not showing physical medical information for injuries. That is the reason because the statute provides for it. Now, what kind of payments are we allowed to give out in this statute? Economic loss and non-economic. What does that mean? Economic loss means if you lost it because of deep cuts, that's economic loss. If you paid for doctors or hospitals out of your own pocket for these types of injuries, that's economic loss. It's a fact. Drops, that's economic loss. There's also non-economic loss. That's the lawyers with the equivalent to pain and suffering. That's the piece of it that is what we call on the law of the statute, but the tax law may make sense of the words. It's for your multiple distress, your injuries, your piece of it that's not accounted for. We'll be cleared out with models. You'll be able to go on our website when we get this moved. You'll be able to figure out more or less what you might get under the fund. Then you saw the models we're going to show for this. Now, another problem for some people is that the statute requires us to deduct from whatever the award is certain things that people receive, certain payments. Because what Congress wanted to do was not overcompensate or over-undercompensate. They wanted to make people more or less hold for their economic loss. So there's what we call a collateral source field. If you've got disability payments, if you've got pensions, if you receive severance in ordinary litigation, you... You see the part that says ground zero? That was the original area. You have to be present within that area under the first fund in order to get compensation. We have drawn the line at Reed Street going from west to east. And that, we draw the line there because looking at the satellite photographs, that's where we think there was sufficient dust and debris to give rise to respiratory and other injuries that are going to be covered. And some people think we should draw the line through the north. Some people think we should draw the line through the south. We're taking comments on that. If people have any proof or evidence that they're exposed to dust and through the north, bring it to us. Let us have it, and we'll see it. We want to try to get this right. We need information on this. If you have information, please, please answer. And this will be decided when we come out with the final decision. Now, we talked about what injuries are going to be covered. In a minute, I'm going to show you the injuries that are covered called by Title I and Title II. And as I said, these injuries can be expanded when there is sufficient scientific and medical evidence. We're not looking for a legal standard of evidence. And this is a court of law. We're just looking for reasonable medical and scientific evidence. And we're going to read every new study that comes out to see if there are cancers and other injuries. There are people who think autoimmune injuries should be included. There are numbers of injuries that are not included yet which people think should be included. We're, as a view of this periodically based on science. These are the injuries that are listed. Most of those are respiratory injuries and gastric respiratory injuries. Things like asthma, reactive airway dysfunction syndrome, RAS, CFT, plant dries, high plant dries, GER, and other muscular injuries. These are on the website. You can find them. See them on the NIH website, they're on our website. These are the injuries that are on hand now that are covered by these twelve programs. Now, what have we been doing? We've had to count theirs. We've been reaching out to interest groups. We've been meeting with lawyers. We've been trying to get as much information as possible so that it can help us create this fund and the processes with this fund as best we can. We're working on the claim process, claims form, the methodology. And we are going to be transparent. There's nothing to hide. We don't want to hide anything. We want you to understand how decisions are made in this. And we have on the website, and here you can go out, there's a card that will tell you how to get on the website. We're going to give you the website of information at the end of this program so you can get on the website. And on the website, there are frequently asked questions every year. We have taken everybody's questions that we've been getting. And we've been trying to answer them. We're going to keep adding to that. You have more and more good questions. And whenever we get a good question, we put it on the website so that other people who have the same questions can read it, we get an answer, and hopefully, it will help them understand what's going on or what process is. We're going to be consistent with the first five because people who liked the way the first fund operated and how they approached these reports. So wherever we get them, we're going to follow what we learned in the first fund. And I'm very lucky to have Debbie Pinkston, who helped from the first fund, come back and work as my deputy to help run this fund. So there will be consistency. That may have been the best decision I've made to try to get this up and running in the short amount of time we have and to get it up and running right. Unfortunately, Debbie was beaten today. She's from Washington. But I think we all met her, and she was just wonderful. But I think we will meet her, and she is just wonderful, totally. And it's going to keep us moving forward. And we need to develop efficiency. We need to do this effectively and efficiently so we don't waste money. Or we use the money, but if that's a purpose, it's to get the deal, you will be using it for it. There are couple of dates that I think are important. We have published our draft regulations. We have to update this to send in comments. After that, we are going to craft the final regulations. We hope to do that before September 11th, but it will be in September. We are hoping it's a happy fun, won't be long until in October. We could have done it before that, any of us, because we don't have any money. Because the statute only allows us to start using the money on our state's programs. Now, I think here's something that I want you to be aware of. Because when I said you don't have to watch the blog, that's true. You have two years. If you had an injury now that you've got any time, you have two years from the time our regulations are fine, which will be in September, to bring your findings of those injuries. If we experience raised or you get an injury during the time this fund is open, you have two years from the time you get that injury or two years from the time we end to apply to the fund for compensation. So it's sufficient time. There's no doubt. You got to help me. So I don't need for the court. This is our website. Take it down. If you sign up on our website, we will provide any information to you. You give us your income list, we will send you notice that anything do happen. So it's probably that you play the game. We look at your health of all the human bodies as they occur. If you send us your information on the website. We want you to be as helpful and compassionate as possible. And we want to keep this file all the way. That we're starting to create a community. We just haven't been very good. So I'm going to take questions. As I said before, if anybody has any questions that they don't want to ask with TV cameras, please, please see me at the end of this. If you ask questions at other times, other feed, please, please keep your ask questions so we can get to any questions as possible. Sir, is the microphone clearly away for different modules?
Yes. There's a question. It's more than just a question. First off, I want to thank you for your time. I say that because I have cancer. I do understand that you're trying. But the reality is, brothers and sisters that are here, the emergency force that went down there, we didn't ask for it. We went down there. I represent the union tradesmen, by the way. I'm an operating engineer local 15. And the civilian population, the firemen in the cops. I grew up in my family. They've always been heroes and they always will. But the reality is, listening to what you're saying is only half true. And I have proof, which I'm going to tell you in a second. When you stand there and you say that cancer is not in the findings, I have proof that it is. I have proof from the doctors that you work with. A monitoring program, Dr. Love, he wrote a letter for me. The doctors at Stony Brook, they all said I had it. That's why I collected, I'm not sure how many other people in this room did, I collected New York State compensation. And the compensation act is when you get sick on a job, you're compensated. So how can you tell me that cancer is not attributed to being down there? When I have your own doctors wrote letters for me stating that cancer was, when I got sick on it, it was from ground zero. So to me, it's not outweighing what you're saying. And there's a lot of people in this room that have cancer, heart disease. I see victims here that their family members are dead now because of 10 years. And you still want to wait. Well, guess what? I don't have much longer. And I told God, when I had the opportunity to learn how to talk again, I was going to stand up for my brothers and sisters. I don't do this for me.
Well, you're very, you're, let me just respond to a couple of things. You're very vocal and you should. And I'm glad that you had that too. And yes, everybody that went down here with you. The fact is that, the fact is that, who can say from disability? Many people went out on disability on all kinds of injuries. But the disability people said, well, there's no question. But what the fund is looking at, what the Title I is looking at, is scientific and medical epidemiology. I know that doesn't make sense to you.
I'm just a layman guy with cancer from ground zero. But I do know, all the medical tests that I have show that a guy my age who never smoked, who was healthy, who was 100 pounds bigger than I am now.
Back there, I guess, okay? All right? Back there, sir? Listen. Is that the right word?
How you doing, everybody? I'm Lieutenant Bud Barbour. I know you're looking for a scientific link. But, well, they're looking for a scientific link. But the thing is, there is such a thing as plausible link, okay? If you look at the statistics...
But you're just trying to find this isn't a principle.
If you look at this... If you look at the statistics of firemen that came down with cancer, you know, the 100-year history of the fire party, it was roughly 30 a year, okay? Now, 30, sorry, 30 in a 10-year period, right? Now, since 2001, it's over 300, okay? That's an interesting statistic that can't be ignored.
Well, I don't think it's going to be ignored.
So that could be some kind of link.
Well, no studies are coming out, and there are numbers of studies coming out in the next six months. Those are going to be things that are going to be looked at. And hopefully, the right answers will come out of them. And then you can come back and really holler at me when we have those kinds of studies because they're going to be coming out.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, it's hard to tell people if you're patient or waiting to eat. It's really a very hard thing to do. And I can't tell you anything else. We have to wait and see. We're going to solve it. Yes, sir?
This is Greg Marm. Nice to meet you. I wouldn't want to be you. My name is Anthony Conde. I'm a New York City fireman. I have a copy of the pathology report. It's on my ladder. I'm a 41-year-old. I was a 40-year-old non-smoker last year. Just want to give you another face. I think your language is a little off. These are not injuries. I keep saying injuries a lot. These are illnesses. Maybe that's part of the problem. Your language is a little off.
This is the public. This is the blind one.
But as a special master, you address the...
This is the statute.
Okay. The language of the statute is incorrect.
Congress gave us the...
Even a blind man knows when the sun is shining, right?
No, we don't know that. Congress, Congress wrote the statute.
Okay, this is me. This is my pathology.
Right. Yes, sir?
Hi. You know, I'm an oncologist. My name is Jay Raywall. I work in Brooklyn. I have some patients who were first responders of 9/11. And my concern is some of them did go to the World Trade Center Centers of Excellence. But they were really bad at asking about their cancer. That part was not really inquired into. So I'm concerned about the integrity of the data and the accuracy of the data.
No, folks, we should really hope to hear you talk. If you let people talk instead of talking, it would be really easier to have a conversation. We need to have a conversation. We need to get to the bottom of this. So are you aware of the World Trade Center registry that is following 70,000 people? And they're looking at the ones who are very close?
Sure. You know, my patients have gone and they've complained to me about, you know, I'm a community oncologist, so I'm not one of the centers. But they've complained that, you know, their questions and concerns about that was not adequately addressed. You know, this is very important stuff. And important decisions are being made based on the information gathered in these clinics. Nobody's asked me for medical records from these clinics. Nobody's asked for pathology report, you know? That's something that I would expect. You know, my specialties in brain tumors, which are very rare kinds of tumors, nobody has asked what kind of tumor this person had, you know? I got a note. It was about, it was a two-page note of which there were five words that pertain to that issue.
If I were you, I would send my finding around somewhere. I would send it to the World Trade Center registry. I would get the letter. And then we'd have that information.
Right, but maybe the information could be obtained.
Can I say something? Can I say this respectfully to everybody? To everybody in this room? Who in this room is angry? Raise your hand. If you're not angry, get out because you should be angry. Because there's no one in this room more angry than me. I think I proved that. And I don't have to prove anything anymore to anybody. I lost half my foot. I'm pale in comparison to these cancers and these serious respiratory. Sheila did not write the bill. These questions should be directed to Dr. Howard in NIOSH. So tomorrow, I'll get on the phone with Dr. Howard and ask for a town hall meeting. So you guys, with your anger, take a walk with Dr. Howard. You're following the rules of the regulations of a bill that she said in the beginning was not perfect. In fact, it sucks, but it's better than nothing. And we're not going to take that sucks and make it a little better. But directing the anger at this woman who's trying to actually help us is the wrong way to go about this. You guys are the best of the best with this country off in 10 years ago. You guys are champions. And as soon as we come out of character, they're going to find a way to demonize us and say we're crazy and all we're doing around is running in curves and screaming. We know this cancer's got to get added. And I've never once faltered and said when I'm confident that we're going to get something done. I lost my words on my one kidney. Cancer, it's added to this bill. I guarantee that. But beating this woman up tonight, which she could be answering questions about the bill and the payout and the compensation, is wasting everybody here's time. So please, thank you.
I don't want to cut anybody off, but are there any questions that are other than the cancer issue? And I, we understand the cancer issue, but, you know, is there any?
I was a New York City extension officer, and I was a first responder. And I received quotes from FEMA had a hero stamp program. I don't participate in the company.
I don't think so, but give me your information and I will give you an answer.
Like FEMA found me, I want to permanently...
I don't think that...
I want to thank you, sir, from there.
I don't know. And I will check on that. And if you give me your name and how I can get in touch with you, we'll give you an answer by the way. That's a good point. The other question, yes, sir?
I was wondering if you could discuss further autoimmune diseases and the likelihood of inclusion for...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's another one of these issues that we need to look at and see if these could be added and see what this line would deem as one of the scientific literature. We haven't had an opportunity to look at every potential injury yet. But this is one area that I want to look at and see if they should...
Trial, last case, the last settlement, that the city decided to not only issue people funds for cancer, but also a cancer insurance policy that in the future, if you were contract cancer, you'd be covered. And point in case anybody who was in that last case, last trial, last settlement, as you may say. I can't even get a, I cannot get a left insurance policy as a result of how it got out of my life. So my numbers would be astronomical for me to try to get that.
You were part of that case?
I was part of this settlement, but I did not get any kind of cancer coverage. So if I pass away tomorrow as a result of cancer, I had hardships. And if it happens again, my family gets nothing.
Well, I thought you said part of that, like if you were part of that, do you think that cancer part?
No. No, incorrect. If you had cancer as a result of 9/11, you do not qualify for a cancer insurance policy.
I'm going to ask that.
Good evening, Mr. Grandgarden. There are some people in this room that know my husband. My husband has polycythemia ruforvera. He was together five months when he lost 40 pounds. I'm holding a letter here from Dr. Jessica Sirkel from Stony Brook University that verifies the fact that there is direct link to significant exposure subsequent to the attacks that occurred on 9/11. It is more than likely that his polycythemia ruforvera is a direct consequence of that, given his significant exposure. Now, just for your knowledge, we are with EMS. The life expectancy with polycythemia ruforvera is five to 10 years. It's red cell leukemia. And the body cannot cope. Your pancreas can't cope. So as a result of the polycythemia, he developed diabetes as well. The New York City Fire Department took my husband off payroll in January of this year. He has lost all his benefits. We have to fight monthly through DC 30 Cent to get him any medications. He has brain damage as a result of this. You want to talk about destruction of the family? You're looking at it. I also have in this pile Swiss studies and studies from all over the country linking polycythemia ruforvera as a blood-borne cancer to concrete and asbestos dust. It's right here.
Give it a map. Be happy to take...
Here is a copy of the letter from Dr. Sirkel.
You have all the others, sir.
I have all the others, sir. But my point is, what do we do in the meantime? Last week...
There would be nothing with this.
You understand this. I just think that I respect that man, and I respect the hard work and every single person in this room. There are faces in this room that I have cried with over what's happened because I was down there too, David, as a lieutenant. But the point is, the life expectancy for this man is trickling. Last Thursday at 20:08, he went unconscious, stopped breathing, and had a seizure on him at home. And he spent nine hours in Stony Brook. His medical expenses are now over $125,000. No salary, and the doctors at the Fire Department, they hang their heads.
But that's not something this fund can cure.
But cancer must, all I ask to do, all I ask to do...
This is going to be happening for a year or two.
I may not have a year or two.
But we don't have any choice. We have to get through this process.
I understand.
I think John's dead. The fact is, if there is this money, we want to use it the right way.
This is understood. But I beg of you, in closing, I don't want to take up your time. There are other people who have things to say. There are other people who have things to say. Do not allow this to become any more politicized than it already is. There are my friends in here. There are doctors standing up for some of us. These people are dying. I may be dying. I don't know. But I had to do mouth-to-mouth... But I had to do mouth-to-mouth and use a BVM on my husband last Thursday morning. I thank you for your time. There are other people. I will get you that document.
We will review it, and we're going to do the best we can. One more, one or two more questions? Yes, ma'am, sir? He spoke before? Sir, yes?
I spoke to you earlier. I was sent by the White House to coordinate the search and rescue. There were 14,000 cell phones still active, acting dollars though. I spent quite a few days independent cell down with cancer. But if you'll back up on your slide presentation, I have a question for you. I'm sure that particularly related to cancer, can you back that up?
What was...
It talks about where to provide compensation for physical injuries and death and then the everything. What about the time that the people who have had these positions and could not work, that that period of time, I wish we covered in the air?
Let me just respond to that. If people missed, if people have injuries and they were not working, and they can get compensated for not working because they, I think, have disability or any other pain, those are covered in the economic cost. That's back would be covered. So they will be able to put an application, show the bit, their lost income, their value income would be, would be covered by the compensation system.
Well, what you're saying, you're saying, from a period of time, it was required, I think, that it was working until now, that should be covered.
If you were, you didn't get that compensation from any other source, from disability, from social security, from insurance, from anything else, that should be part of your evidence of that. We will look. Any more questions? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Lauren Trimmens. My husband's a great tumor. This is our doctor, a quick one. Anyway, my husband went for a physical to the World Trade Center. And when we got the report back, there was a parabrech on his allergies.
He started using the workplace on the green outside?
The chondroplastic. You know, parabrech is right, parabrech on that, parabrech on third, parabrech, not adults, he has his lungs, two suspense brain tumor, and they were as follows. We were operated for a brain tumor. Please continue to follow up with neuro-oncologists. Is this how they're tracking the cancers? That was about as much of the doctor's passion with us. I don't even know, I'm glad at least he notated it somewhere, but shouldn't they be going into more depth as to, because how are they compiling these studies? I do not understand.
I think that's a very good question, and I think we could get some answers to that most often. I think that's an excellent question.
You know, I would just really like to get some information because, has anybody else here with a cancer, been contacted by the questionnaire with the...
Well, if you, if you, were you part of the World Trade Center Registry?
Yes.
They have a questionnaire every couple, I don't know, probably...
Never, ever received one.
You've never received one?
No, my husband was on the registry right after. He never went to the Stony Brook program.
Well, you don't have to be on the program if you don't have the registry.
We went after he was diagnosed because we wanted to make sure that that's a brain tumor on our chart. But I have never received a questionnaire, heard nothing from anybody.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me just, let me just say a couple of things, and I'll stay as long as I need to, to answer your questions. Now, this is a very difficult, emotional situation. Congress acted. They provided $2.8 billion. They set rules. We might not live through these rules. There are things that we can do, and there are things that we can't do. I can't change the fate. If you were down there at different age, you can't get compensation, what injury you have? Those are things that are set in stone. If things are not set in stone, and you're a discretion, we're going to try to use our discretion in a way that we're responsible to Congress also. You know, if we waste this money, Congress is never going to be there and give it for you, for you all. You have to understand that we have to work within what the statute tells. So, I understand your anger. I understand your feelings, your emotions, they're raw, I understand that. You know, the anniversary is coming. All our emotions are going to be raw. This is a reminder again, and I know you're all reminded every day. You look at your sick spouses, you look at yourself, you look at your families. This is very, very detrimental. And I don't think we should, we should throw away that motion. We couldn't, even if I pulled this other way. It is something that is so important and long. We're going to trust with what we have. We want to hear from you. I don't want to shut you down. I don't want to stop you in any way. Now, if you get the information, gentlemen over there, write this off, get this out. Let us have it. Let the world see. So, we're going to do the best we can. We want your questions. Thank you all. And we'll be around to answer any questions you have.
You gotta go get more money.
Oh, it's the old one. And then it was in the paper today that the fucking bill was signed last night. They're going to knock this out.
They're going to knock this out.
I don't know where it came from, why they put it in there.